Please bear with us as we end our closed session. May I have a motion to return to open session and approve certificate of closed meeting eighteen dash nineteen dash thirteen for the closed session?
So moved.
Second. Whoa. Moved by Ms. Boyd, second by Ms. Holmes. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Palmer Roy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as distributed?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Palmer Roy, second by Ms. Boyd. Are there any changes or discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes have it. Approval, I'm sorry, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April one, 2019 regular school board meeting? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Boyd, second by Ms. Ream. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April ninth, 2019 joint work session of the school board and city council?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Holmes, second by Ms. Palmer Roy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, now we come to our favorite part of the meeting. Let's start with word of the month. Walker Grant sent her.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Melton and Fredericksburg community. Head Start will be presenting the word of the month. Laura Dove, our education program supervisor, will introduce the word to you.
Thank you and good evening. Balanced can be a difficult word for a preschooler to understand. They immediately want to say standing on one foot. But throughout their time at Head Start, they've learned to care for their mind, their body, and their heart, and to work well with others and themselves, which will prepare them to be a lifelong learner. So please enjoy the Head Start students demonstrating the attribute balanced. I hope you all enjoyed that.
Thank you.
Thank you. The VSBA regional art contest was started in nineteen eighty-nine to promote the artistic talents of Virginia's public school students. For each of the nine VSBA regions, a winner is chosen for the elementary, middle, and high school levels. The winning art is framed and displayed in the offices of the VSBA in Charlottesville and the Richmond offices of the State Superintendent of Public Instruction. The Northeastern Regional Forum was held on April tenth, two thousand and nineteen. This year, elementary art was submitted by Lafayette Upper Elementary School with art from Walker Grant Middle School and James Monroe High School. This year's art selections were submitted by, at the elementary school level, Emily Hernandez Fernandez, daughter of Maely Fernandez Flores. Is she here? This year, at the middle school level, the art was submitted by Lily Howren, daughter And at the high school level, the art was submitted by Josie McKim, daughter of Thomas and Kathleen McKim.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, Dr. Melton, School Board members, and all of our guests tonight. In March of this year, I was able to get some communication and I heard about a significant honor that was given to us by one of our staff members at Lafayette. This woman and professional needs no introduction, but we are really honored to have her here tonight. And she has had a tremendous impact in our community, in the arts, and we will recognize her later this year as a retiree of forty-five years in the Fredericksburg City Public School System. And she has impacted and influenced music in so many ways in our community, and we're so proud of her. She's a legacy. And so she was recognized by Robertson's, and I would like to bring up today Jamie Wilson to talk for a moment about this recognition. Jamie not only has a son at Lafayette who's being influenced by Mrs. Hankerson, but he also has a wife that's in the system, and I'm sure he's been influenced in some ways by Mrs. Hankerson as well. So thank you for being with us tonight.
Hello, everyone. So at Robertson's Music, this year we started something new. We're doing our Robertson's Music Hall of Fame. What we did was we set a criteria for music teachers and educators in our area throughout all the different districts who have been teaching for at least twenty years. They've had an impact on their community outside of their school, and also had some sort of connection to the store. So Mrs. Hankerson was selected by our committee. She was first ballot nominated, first one, we got all unanimous votes to get in. She has impacted me personally. She taught me, she taught my brother and my sister, and now even my son. So we, I couldn't think of anyone else who really deserved that award more than her. So just want to give her her flowers while she can still smell them. So we love Mrs. Hankerson for all she has done for us, for me personally, and also for the store as well. So. Congratulations.
Speech.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Melton, and families. In April, twenty-two students and three faculty members, Mrs. Christy Allison, Mrs. Barbara Dyer, Mr. Tony Lewis, attended the International DECA Competition in Orlando. With over sixteen thousand students in attendance, it is a rigorous competition, and event-filled five days. Two of our students placed second overall at this international competition of one-hundred-and-sixty teams in the Community Service Project event. Their presentation and twenty-page manual highlighted their Saint Jude Teen Gala, which raised over sixty-two thousand dollars this year. These students are Jack Hardy, son of Mr. Todd Hardy and Mrs. Amy Hardy. Not sure if Jack is here, I didn't see him. And Emma Cruz, daughter of Mr. Michael Cruz and Mrs. Mary Jane Cruz. And these two students will present their community service project to our faculty tomorrow, I do believe. Gina Elkin, daughter of Mr. Paul Elkin and Mrs. Carla Elkin, was a finalist in restaurant and food service management. Gina placed in the top twenty out of one-hundred-and-ninety competitors. So now JM represents internationally. It's phenomenal. Odyssey of the Mind. Two teams participated from James Monroe in the regional competition, and both teams placed first. Team members from team number one are Gray Moldrow, son of Mr. Chris Moldrow and Mrs. Tamara Moldrow. Okay, just stay right up there, Gray. Okay. Ariane Chavez, daughter of Ms. Amanda Sprouse. Don't think Ariane's here. Piper Hart, daughter of Mr. Jonathan Hart and Mrs. Amy Faulkner Hart. Anna Slominski, daughter of Mr. Steve Slominski and Mrs. Becky Slominski. And Olivia Coulon, daughter of Mr. Whitney Coulon and Mrs. Sonia Coulon. Congratulations, students. I'm told they've already picked their question for next year. Team members from team number two are Dylan Scott, son of Mr. Britton Scott and Mrs. Christina Reese Healy, son of Mr. Todd Healy and Mrs. Pamela Healy. Ryland Holland, son of Mr. Dean Holland and Mrs. Virginia Holland. Noah Lucas, son of Mr. Mark Lucas and Mrs. Marjorie Lucas. We also have some Walker Grant students on this team, so. Justin Dominguez, son of Mr. Jesus Dominguez and Mrs. Elizabeth Dominguez. And Ivan Zhu, son of Mr. Bo Zhu and Mrs. Zhu Ping Zhu Ching. That's it, that's all for this. Congratulations, students. Our Optimist Student of the Month for April. Our faculty members were asked to nominate a member of the senior class for recognition. As the Optimist Club Student of the Month, the purpose of the award is to recognize students for their efforts in arts, athletics, academics, and community service work. Although our recipient is not here tonight, I am pleased to recognize her. Ms. Haley Casperson, daughter of Mr. Matthew Casperson and Mrs. Stephanie Casperson, is the April Optimist Student of the Month. Okay. Each year, American Legion posts select outstanding high school students for boys and girls state. During this week-long program, participants receive instruction in citizenship and experience firsthand how their state and federal governments function. This year, the delegates from James Monroe are Noah Adams, son of Mr. Michael Adams and Mrs. Elizabeth Adams. Martin, Martin's not going to be here, we have soccer tonight. Martin Crowe, son of Mr. Thomas Crowe and Mrs. Maria Crowe. Christopher Hall, son of Mr. Barry Hall and Mrs. Della Hall. Congratulations. Dean Holland, son of Mr. Dean Holland and Mrs. Virginia Holland. Alex Kohler, son of Mr. David Kohler and Mrs. Christine McBride. Ned Mauer, son of Mr. Charles Mauer and Mrs. Stephanie Mauer. Ryan Sweet, son of Mr. Timothy Sweet and Mrs. Tracy Sweet. Tyler Whitman, son of Mr. Jimmy Whitman and Mrs. Rachel Whitman. Congratulations. Eden Barudy, daughter of Mr. Timothy Barudy and Mrs. Kristen Barudy. Congratulations. Virginia Howard, daughter of Mr. John Howard and Mrs. Stacy Howard. Congratulations. Mary Wen Hall, daughter of Mr. Chris Hall and Mrs. Rebecca Hall.
Thank you again. We'll take a quick recess, so those who would like to leave us may leave, and we'll
Okay, I'll get it done sometime tomorrow. I have like allergy appointment and everything. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. We will now start. The next item on our agenda is hearing of citizens. Are there any citizens wishing to adjust the board this evening? Seeing none, I will keep going. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a recommendation, please?
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as presented with the following items: policy revisions, which are a second reading, the FY two thousand and nineteen supplemental appropriation E-rate Medicaid and Technology and Security Systems Service Contract.
May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Boyd, second by Ms. Ream. All those in favor, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes have it? Okay, next item, action items, beginning with personnel.
Recommend the board approve the personnel schedules, including the addendum information shown as of May thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Holmes, second by Ms. Palmer Roy. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Palmer Roy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, instructional presentation. Effective Schools Update. Hugh Mercer Elementary School and Lafayette Upper Elementary School. Mrs. Thank you, sweetie. Good, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairperson, board members, Dr. Melton, families and friends. It's my pleasure to present the Effective Schools framework, starting with Hugh Mercer, and going then on to Lafayette Upper Elementary School. There we go. When we began this year, this, we've been doing this, I don't know how many, ten, at least ten years, but it's gotten better and better, and our schools have gotten used to using this as a means of helping improve things at the school. And there are the seven correlates: Clear and Focused Mission, Climate of High Expectation, Instructional Leadership, Opportunity to Learn, Frequent Monitoring of Student Progress, Safe and Orderly, and Homeschool Relations. And the lead person in each of these committees meets once a month in the BLT, the Building Leadership Team. And in that process, they go, they go through a reflective process of bringing up topics that are relevant to their particular correlate. And then they begin by studying, studying whatever that topic is. Then they reflect on it, then they begin planning what they want, might want to do, and then they do it, and then the cycle begins over again. At Hugh Mercer, I'm going to give you a rundown of each of our correlates. They had various things they focused on, but our Clear and Focused Mission, we focused on IB attitudes, the attitudes of appreciation through staff appreciation activities, and it gained confidence through our Patriot Singers, Reading Ambassadors, creativity through our inquiry, and curiosity through ARC, our American Reading Company Research. Then our Climate of High Expectations, led by Heather Wright, began planning the end-of-the-year awards criteria. That's, may sound irrelevant, but it's very relevant to kids and their parents. And they refined and clarified all the awards that we give out at the end of the year. Frequent Monitoring of Student Progress, excuse me, was led by Hadley Christie, and they were designing themes for each of our Spirit Fridays. And we've got very cute and appealing themes that the kids follow every month toward the end of the year, like March was wearing green for our leprechaun. April was going on spring break, and they were to wear tropical or Hawaii shirts to school. Memorial Day, we'll be wearing red, white, and blue, things like that. And then a script was written during the week and announced on morning announcements. Next was our Opportunity to Learn and Time on Task, led by Rebecca Firth, and this was a big one. We have established many morning remediation programs through this correlate, and also enrichment clubs in math and reading. We have replaced a lot of our after-school programs with the morning ones when children are the freshest. Then Safe and Orderly Environment was led by Laura Thompson, and they've led the PBIS program with, with Introduction of Cafeteria Matrix for the whole school. And the kids really like this, and the behavior has gotten so much better. And all the kids are learning the PBIS language. Next, we have Homeschool Relations, led by Carly Whitmore, and she, she was instrumental in the championship game, basketball games during March Madness. And that correlate got pep rallies going for each, each of the two games, and included the JM Drum Line, which really generated a lot of excitement for kids. And we had great turnouts and great times, and, well, except for Mr. Wheeler's injury that kept him out of work for about two months. But other than that, it was a great time, and we had great basketball games. Instructional Leadership was led by Stephanie Hudson, and as we move toward authorization for IB, there's a more global focus in all that we do. And our last parent evening of the year was our mini, our multicultural and inquiry night. We included all nations represented by families at Hugh Mercer to display and wear native dress, to share their national foods, and present a variety of activities, games, songs, and dances. And we showcased all the project-based learning going on through inquire, inquiry at the school. They have loved, loved, loved the project-based instruction that they've gotten at school this year. This was the night before spring break came. You know, this was the Thursday before the Friday that began spring break, but our turnout was huge. We had lots and lots of people there, and lots and lots of food, and everyone had a wonderful time. And finally, our PBIS under Safe and Orderly Environment. Scholars came up with a plan to help our students be respectful, caring, and responsible in the hallways and lunchrooms by becoming lunchroom monitors and giving out Patriot Pride tickets. There, there's their picture at the left. And second graders came up with a universal quiet down symbol to use, and the entire school voted on their favorites. They chose quiet down, and that symbol is... And they do, they respond, it's amazing how kid to kid, they respond very well. Are there any questions?
I guess, I don't know enough about PBIS, like, in the schools to know, like, what is, like, the cafeteria matrix? Like, what does that mean under PBIS?
Just a behavior, a protocol.
What the behaviors are expected in the cafeteria. Got you.
Well, it's, if you've been in cafeteria when it's not monitored or, or these things are not taking place, it can be, it can be pretty hectic and pretty noisy.
I mean, I go, not to yours, but to another one.
Well, I, yeah, they all, they all... Well, yeah, they all, they all can be. But it's gotten nicely under control.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? At this time, I'll turn it over to Matthew Terry, Principal of Lafayette Upper Elementary School. Thank you.
Good evening again. Let's see where I can pull this up here. So, go down, let's see. Okay, these are just our correlate. We are led by Denise Griffin. She's our BLT Chairperson. I wanted to highlight some of these folks who have been doing really great work with us this year on our BLT and correlates. We chose to focus, as you probably won't be surprised, on IB focus this year. And a lot of our year was based on prepping and getting ready for our authorization visit, which just happened. So, these are two major things that I wanted to highlight tonight. Want to thank our Clear and Focused Mission Corlet for working on the mission statement, and we did some revisions there. And then we did a lot of IB and PYP branding in our school. If you haven't had a chance to come in, I know some of you have, but, man, it really opens up the environment, and when you come in, it's a different feel. Right when you walk in the building, and I do want to thank Mrs. Walsh before I forget. She was a very big piece of that for us this year. But talking a little bit about the mission statement, we had to revise the mission statement. We were looking at IB, PYP language, we were looking at the standards and the expectations, and we decided, hey, we really ought to make some, excuse me, some changes here. So, we started to study that, and we reflected on it. We really needed to look at the school history, and we realized this wasn't going to be an easy task, because a lot of people have different opinions about what a school mission statement might want to include. So, we did something first where, if you look at your, we planned, and then we, finally, we're in the process of trying to do some of this right now, but I want to draw your attention to the original and then the revised that we did short-term. So, what we did was, we added all students in there, and again, this was from a lot of feedback and discussion, and then we added in a global society to represent not only the cultural spirit of IB, but also the global mindedness that we wanted to represent. So, we started with that, and then through the year, we came up with two new versions after that. So, that was to get us through our first verification visit, which we're really excited to find out more about, but we haven't found out yet. But I feel really confident about that, and these two versions are very different. So, through a lot of discussion, a lot of feedback from staff and even children, these were the two versions that we came up with. So, from here, we voted, and we said, let's, let's take a vote and figure out what we come up with. Well, it turns out, we voted through the staff, and it was fairly close, but the children, it was not close at all. The children easily decided that our winner was what you see in yellow, and that was the more wordy of the two, as a matter of fact. But what I really like to show you is the options, the reason why they chose that option, and I put three bullets there for you to take a look at, and that is what the scholars said, why they chose what they chose. So, I thought you might enjoy that. They really, they recognized the fact that there was IB language in there, they liked that it was kid-friendly, and they recognized that. And then they said, hey, you know, this is good, not just for us in school, but for the community. And I just love that feedback. That was not driven by adults. That was all children, which is pretty cool. So, that's where we are at this point. Our next goal, of course, is the planning and the doing and moving forward, promoting this new mission statement and getting things printed and ready to go. The other thing I'd like to just bring up is our branding. If you haven't walked into our school and you haven't seen the 24 flags of the birth nations of our students, it is impressive. One of my favorite things about Lafayette that we've been able to do in my time there, and I do want to thank Sonia again for her work, but we studied this, we walked through the building, we decided to walk through other buildings, and we involved our correlates, and specifically, the Climate of High Expectations Corlet ran this with us and the BLT with Mrs. Walsh. And we went through the schools, we sort of kind of mapped out where we wanted things to be. The library is a big hub for our building, so we wanted that to be a focus. And I'm going to show you a picture in a second of that. But as we planned out, we prioritized, because these things are pretty expensive when you get to it, these folks that put things up. We had to create a budget, we had to figure out a timeline, and we did all those things, and we figured that out. And that was our planning process, and our due process was getting those contractors in the building. When can we be the least disruptive in the building, and how do we do that? We even had James Monroe scholars come over, and they did murals and things in our building, and it's just beautiful. So, I hope you get a chance to walk through and see that. We're certainly not done yet, but here are some examples of what some of the things we did. The program of inquiry is right as you walk in on the left side, but see those flags? We just love our flags, and it's just been wonderful. And in addition to that, we have a sort of a sign that says what each flag is, so children can learn where those flags are from. But I can't speak enough about a child walking through the hallway and looking up in the air at their flag and smiling. It's a big deal. And the branding has helped us produce a level of language that we can promote in ways without us just telling them as adults, but for a visual. So, we're really pleased with that. We thank you for the budget that we have with that, and we will continue to continue that process. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have, but those are the two focus areas this year. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Financial report.
Thank you very much. You have the March report in front of you. First of all, there's no surprises on the report, no large variances of any kind to note. I will tell you that, on the next report, the appropriation the city made for the VPI program will show up as part of the budget next month. That's already been put into the accounting package. And then hopefully, also, the fund balance appropriation should be in the next report. I will tell you that the finance staff has already begun audit schedules for the end of this year, while we're also working on next year's budget. And that's both in the areas of accounts payable and payroll. And a little twist, is a lot of that's done electronically now, so we're already ahead of the game on that. Are there any specific questions I can answer in regards to the monthly financial report for anyone? No?
It just looks, I just, it just looks like there's a bigger variance in this one than usual, like 4.58%. Isn't that bigger than usual?
It does, because I factored in part of that plan, fund balance appropriation. You don't see it in the system yet, but it's going to come. It's just a matter of someone posting it to the...
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
Okay.
Thank you. The next information item is an update on the school budget.
Oh, and the budget? Health insurance? Is that what you mean? Do you want me to go from memory?
So, just to give you an update on where we're at in looking at how to meet what we're getting with what we need, there were some savings that were found, and would you like to detail them?
Yeah, the, the, the school board approved budget requested $2.125 million from the city in new funding. The city manager's budget recommended $1 million. City council increased the tax rate and approved as a first reading on their budget, 1.4 million for the schools, and they're set to have their second and final vote tomorrow night. In the meantime, we found that our health insurance increase came in at no increase. So, that saved us $426,000, $25,000. So, now the gap went from us, over $700,000, to $300,000. And as we, we have gotten more information about retirements and other personnel changes, the remaining amount of $300,000 or difference will be covered mostly through attrition.
So, based on what I'm hearing, then that means that our budget is going to be fully funded?
We are going to be able to execute our budget as we derive it.
Okay, great. And I just want to acknowledge that, since I've been on the board this year's process and working with city council, has been one of the best that I have experienced. I'll be the first to complain when we don't get their support, so I want to be the first to acknowledge when we do get their support, and it's been great working with them. While we may not agree on a lot of issues, it's the support of our teachers and administrators that we strike the same accord. And so, I want to really say how grateful I am that we are at this point, and we're not sweating and upset that the raises are not in the budget. This year is going to happen. I also want to acknowledge Dr. Milton and Mr. Baker, the hard work that they did in coming together, listening to us complain and arguing and everything else, the strategic approach that's taken. And definitely give Ms. Boyd a grateful thank you, thank you, thank you. Your presentation, although I was unfortunately not able to attend, but your presentation to city council, I was informed, was excellent, and they were very pleased of the openness, the way we've restructured our reports. So, it's like both sides gave a little in order to come together for the good of this city, for the good of the school system. And I, for one, after all these years, I'm so thankful.
I agree, and it didn't hurt to have a few engaged citizens.
That's what I was going to say.
That's true.
I wanted to thank all of the...
But you know, our citizens have always been engaged.
Parents and citizens who...
A few more.
You know, that made a big difference this year, and I hope it continues, that we continue. I still see, we have more people coming to our board meetings and city council, and that's important.
Absolutely. Okay, so the next item, the VSBA School Law Conference will be held on June 7 in Richmond. Does anyone here plan to attend?
Dr. Russ and I will be attending that.
I'm going to try to go, too. I'd like to go. It's the day after, the day after graduation, but yeah, I'm going to try to go.
The registration deadline is this week. Please let Ms. Wright know, no later than Wednesday, she says.
Okay.
Okay. At our last meeting, the date for the board's organizational meeting was announced as July 10. This date was incorrect, thank goodness, and should have been stated as Monday, July 8. This is the second Monday of the month due to the Independence Day holiday. However, the board could meet on Monday, July 1, if members are available that evening. I prefer July 1 over the 8.
The 8th is better for me.
8th is, I can do either one.
My mom's turning 75. We got to go someplace July 1.
This is the first year that we, for a long time, that we could have one on the 1st, so we just wanted to give you the option of choosing either the 1st or the 8. That's either one.
What time is that meeting? What time will that meeting start?
Same time that we always start.
Normal start time.
That's a normal one. That's not an early one. Okay.
Yeah, it's a normal start. August is when we start.
Okay, so we agree on the 8? The VSBA orientation for new board members and superintendents will be held on July 22 in Richmond. If anyone wishes to attend, please let Ms. Wright know as soon as possible. The VSBA Conference on Education will be held in Richmond on July 23. Does anyone know? Jen is shaking her head. Please let Ms. Wright know as soon as possible. That ends my announcements. I would start off, good of the order, by saying kudos to Ms. Tankersley for your vision in bringing our French student here for a couple of weeks. The article this morning was outstanding, so thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to take a minute to thank all the teachers that worked for Fredericksburg City Schools. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and I know the PTAs really knocked it up the park, doing some nice things for our teachers, and I just wanted to say that we certainly appreciate them.
Then I'll, I'll give a shout-out to the nurses, since that was also nurse appreciation. We have, we have amazing nurses, and, you know, we've had some times where we really needed significant medical care at all of our schools this year, and I'm always thankful that we have RNs and that we have really good RNs.
Absolutely.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Hearing from no one else, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Boyd, second by Ms. Ream. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Meeting's adjourned.